Clear Beach Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 12th, and the time is 6:00 P.M. Commissioner Lister, will you lead us into this evening's invocation?
I will, Mr. Mayor. Please join me in prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for joining us here today. We ask that you continue to bless this wonderful city. We know that wisdom is only from you, and that we ask that you continue to bless the Commission with that wisdom and guidance. All these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Commissioner Poe?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Here.
At this time, I entertain a motion for approval of the provided minutes.
I second.
I have a motion of second. Is there any additions or corrections? Would the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Before I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda, I believe the City Attorney would want to make some amends on it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On item number one, or actually, it's I-1 Development Agreement for the Holiday Isle Marina, this is the Holton Project in ordinance 2015-18, I'm asking that you move that up just before public comment. And at that point, I'm going to ask for a motion to be made to continue these two agenda items to May the 10th.
Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
I have no problem.
Yes.
Yes.
So the motion is second to amend the agenda moving items under New Business 1 and 2 right before public comment?
I saw a move, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Excuse me, ma'am. Please be recognized before you speak, or you will be removed. At this time, I have a motion of second.
Who was the second?
The second was, was it you, Nancy? Who was the second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Is there any further discussion? Yes, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. You've got to come, you've got to come up to the podium, give your address, your name and address.
My name is Kim DeBois. I live at 582 Crystal Drive, Madeira Beach. And it's those, to rezone that from marine use, which was probably a good idea three years ago, or even two years ago, to rezone it to the planning, to put up the condominiums, we need to discuss, you would need to widen the bridge first, it's, or possibly moving the school to the old Walmart, and then putting the condominiums there. But we need the marine area for all the boats to refuel. It's a lot of, maybe put a boat motel there instead, keeping it as the marine use. Now, unlike three years or two years ago, this is now a revenue-producing area from a marine use that it didn't use to be. And that's why we wanted to have the discussion tonight.
All that's being done right now, there was a motion for the agenda, okay? The agenda item being moved. So the item that was up for the motion was not for a vote or anything on those items. So all the, so did you have anything on the agenda being moved? The 1 and 2 being moved for public comment?
Yeah, number one, you're moving to another, yeah, agenda number one under New Business is what I was just talking about. So, and since we have everybody here, we're, I would be kind of concerned that we might not have this chance again. What's going to happen when you remove this agenda from tonight that we all are here to?
You'll have an opportunity at the next meeting. It's just like tonight never happened, and it'll move on to the May 10th meeting. You'll have, there'll be public comment the entire, that entire meeting as well.
And actually, ma'am, if you want, when public comment comes up, since it'll be, public comment is on items of city business which are not on the agenda but pertain to city business, you can actually get up tonight and make a comment on it, too.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Yes, Mr. Miller?
I think I'm going to become the Mrs. Barnador of Madeira Beach.
Just be polite, you won't be removed from the room, sir.
I don't know how many people remember Mrs. Barnador?
Oh, brother. Steve never plays, honey. Don't be like her, please.
I'm going to be like Mrs. Barnador, because she said the truth, all right?
She did.
She was kind of strange, but she said the truth. This is relative to this particular item. Could we ask the question as to why we're deferring this?
Mr. City Attorney, do you, would you want to answer that question at time, or just when the items come up?
No, I'd be happy to answer it now. We want to make sure that the notice has been properly provided to the public, and there's been some question as to whether or not it's been properly provided. And so we're using all precautions that we have in making sure that the public is properly noticed. So that's the reason.
You've already made one comment, sir. I can't let you, it's not a debate. Sorry, Steve. Yes, sir, Pete?
I specifically, Peak Trot, 378 140th Avenue. What concerns me by moving it to March 10th, a lot of concerned people are going to be gone back to the Snowbirds. So are we excluding them from the ability to attend? It appears to me we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Is there any other comment? Nope. All right. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Next presentations and proclamations, we have members from the Beach Rotary Chamber here today. Thanks.
And I know you met the Gulf Beach Rotary.
Yeah. Folks, I'm sure you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we had Bears Wheels and Pick Hornball in town. And I spent a couple of evenings down there, and I heard from a few of you people, they're actually out here in the audience today, and it doesn't but compliments. When I was walking around, I saw a lot of families, a lot of kids, a lot of people having a good time. I received emails. I mean, one was spectacular, one said it was like being on a movie set. And we are hoping that you be back here next year, because talk about, when we talked about doing family things and family value events, that was definitely one of them. And in appreciation of the city of Madeira Beach, we'd like to present the Rotary as key to the city.
Thank you very much. The Gulf Beach Rotary has been around for over 60 years, and this is our fifth year of hosting or sponsoring the Spring Break Festival. And I'm very proud to say that every dollar that comes into the Rotary from that event goes back out into the community in, in the, in terms of contributions to local organizations. Some of those organizations are Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Guardian, Edlydom, All Children's Hospital, Voices for Children, the Rotary Camp for Disabled Children. And we try to focus on organizations that serve at-risk children. I said this is, this is our sixth year of doing that. We, the previous five years, we had it on Treasure Island. And Treasure Island was very supportive, and we had wonderful events. But we kind of ran out of room, so we wanted, we were looking for a larger venue. And that's why we asked to come over here to Recreation Center, to Rock Park, a larger venue, we're able to put more rides for the families and have more vendors. What I didn't know in coming over here is the type of cooperation I was going to get from the city. It was wonderful from, from the, from the Mr. Mayor, City Manager, to Doug Andrews and his staff, to Recreation Department, all throughout the event. It was very professional. And believe me, when you, when you have an event like that, you have a few problems. And we had a few problems, and every time we did, we'd get together, and those problems were solved, and we'd go on. So I'm very appreciative of that. So on behalf of the Gulf Beach Rotary, thank you, and thank you very much.
Next proclamations, we have a proclamation for Older Americans Month, which is May 2016. Whereas Madeira Beach includes a community of older Americans who deserve recognition for their contributions to our nation, and whereas Madeira Beach recognizes that older adults are trailblazers advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, paving the way for future generations. And whereas Madeira Beach is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older Americans and helping all individuals to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible. And whereas we appreciate the value of inclusion and supporting and helping older adults successfully contribute and, excuse me, contribute to, contribute and benefit from their communities. Now therefore, I Travis Palladino, Mayor of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 as Older Americans Month. And Madam City Clerk, I believe this is going to be mailed since the folks won't be here, would you, could I pass this down? No, I guess it's somebody else. Next, we have our Representative Kathleen Peters here to give us a little update what's happening in Tallahassee. Representative Peters, happy you're here.
Mayor, Commissioners, it's very good to see you here, and it's great to see a crowded room. Sorry you didn't all get your time. I'm going to hear what you have to say when, when all the comment comes up. I want to thank you for inviting me. I always love coming to give you an update. Let me get my, my notes up real quick, if that's okay. I wasn't sure if you were going to get to me. Well, I thought I would start first with the budget, and thankfully, I can give you an update saying that we're all done, and we're not there anymore, so you can all breathe easy. We're not going to do any horrible things to you anymore until next November. But where we ended up on the budget, we ended up with an $82.3 billion budget. And where does that money go? So 41.7% goes into healthcare. So that is our biggest budget item in the state. 26.4% goes into education, 15.3% goes into economic development and transportation, and the rest goes into courts and agriculture and government operations. So you know what you guys cost, what percent, I'm not sure if you don't off the top of your head, what percentage your administration is in your budget, but in the state of Florida, our administration is 2.8%. So we, we're still pretty lean in the state. It is the highest per student education funding ever in the state of Florida. The governor has been adamant about the tax cuts, and if you read in the recent articles that Florida is one of the most desirable cities in the nation because of our low taxes in the state. There's a lot of things that pass that I think are real important. But instead of talking about the typical things that we talk about, I want to talk about something different, and it's something that I've worked on for two years. And I'm going to bring it up because I think many of the beach communities, and a lot of people in general, don't think this is very important. And it is. For the last two years, our public defender and our sheriff, Bob Dillinger and Bob Gualtieri, both came to me two years ago and demanded that I do something to change the mental health system in the state of Florida. Now, they focused on Pinellas County, but you know, if we're going to do it, we're going to do the whole thing. And so I, I didn't know anything about it, so I've taken the last two years and I've researched what this is costing us in this state, and how our system is so broken. So what I can tell you is, you know, I did a lot of work for years on the homeless issues, and what I found, I couldn't fix homeless till we fixed mental health. So as we looked at it, and the, and the governor has done an executive order because it is so problematic, and Pinellas County is going to benefit greatly because of that executive order. But we're looking at every single department. So our healthcare costs, if you have someone, and we have one in five adults in this country have a mental illness, that includes severe depression, so one in five adults, and so any community that thinks this does not touch them, it does. The problem is, the stigma has never gone away, and because of that stigma, I believe that is the reason that most people will not seek treatment. That equates to 43 million adult Americans in this country. Of those 43 million, more than 41% are also addicted to drugs because they're self-medicating. And so we have a large population in this country, and we don't have a workforce, nor do we have a system to address it. And what has happened is, we have bulging jails, we have bulging prisons with people with mental illness that are not getting assessments, are not getting treatment, they're not getting help, and all we're doing is putting them in this revolving door. And I'm going to give you an example of how this impacts every one of your citizens and every citizen in this state. When Miami-Dade looked at their problem with the bulging jail, they had so many people in their county jail that they had four people in a, in a cell that was meant for one person, and most of them had a mental illness. And they didn't know, they couldn't get them out of the system. And so USF did a study, and they looked at it, and what they found is, they thought it would be thousands of citizens from Miami-Dade, it was 95 individuals. 95 individuals were in that revolving door system so bad that when they took the history of those 95 people for five years, what they found is that those 95 individuals collectively were arrested more than 2,200 times at a cost of $12.8 million to the county of Miami-Dade. So our sheriff did a similar thing, not as in-depth, and he quickly was able to find 33 individuals that were in the same revolving door system in our county, and it was costing Pinellas County $2 million a year. $2 million a year for 33 individuals. And that's coming out of all of our pockets, and that barely even scratches the surface of what I have found. So our healthcare costs exponentially are more because someone with a mental illness cannot treat their diabetes or their other chronic illness if they haven't treated that illness. And so when they go into the ER, their costs are exponentially higher than anybody else with that same other disease like diabetes. And so it is, it's at the core of what's costing us a lot of money in the healthcare system. It is at the core of what is clogging up our courts. It is at the core of what's happening in our police department, and thankfully, we have one of the best sheriffs departments in the, in the state, in my opinion. It is at the core of what is clogging up our prisons and our jail system, and it's at the core of our child welfare. The number one reason children are put in foster care is for drug addiction. Number one reason is substance abuse. And we know that majority of those are associated, also dual diagnosed with mental illness. And it is also at the core, we're spending an enormous amount of money in the school system because of families that have mental illness and they're within our system. So this is truly at the core of what is taxing our budget and our resources. And so this year, what I can tell you is, not only did we increase funding by more than $60 million over what we funded last year, we passed sweeping legislation that is probably more legislation than we have ever done in this state since the Baker Act was done in 1970. And this is significant. It is absolutely significant, and I can't understate it as more, and my desire is to talk about it a lot, so people start talking about it, and we can eliminate that stigma. So what are we doing? Every single county, and I, I want someone from the beach communities, whether it's each beach, or if you guys do it collectively, pick someone from the big C to be involved in this county planning, because your citizens are equally at risk as any other city in this county, and they're paying the same, the same taxing burden. So the county must, the managing entity which contracts all mental health and behavioral health services, must create a comprehensive plan that will create a system with access through any door. So if they go through the ER, if they get picked up by a sheriff's deputy, if it comes through the schools, however they get picked up or put into the system, they will have access in any door, and they will be a continuum of quality care to ensure that there's a safety net wrapped around that entire family, so that mental illness does not escalate to somebody being put in prison and being criminalized or anything else. So that is most important, and there's a very short timeline. So the managing entities will begin with the county and all the stakeholders, and I really hope that the big C or somebody or someone from this community will be actively involved in the planning of that. It will require some kind of central receiving facility being created, or triage centers throughout the county. They must come up with some kind of system. We are really good at acute care for Baker Acts, but once we release them from the Baker Act, what we're not good is ensuring that there's follow-through, and that there's follow-through care, and that the rest of the family is understanding the illness. And so we don't do it well at all. Our acute care, we do well, the rest of it, we don't. So that whole continuum of care must be created and implemented. What we've done with some of the money that we brought in, we put in more money for central receiving facilities. I know it's the desire of the sheriff and the public defender to have one, and so they can access those grants. We've also brought in a fit team, and a fit team is someone who, if you have a substance abuse problem, and DCF might take your child away, and it's not extreme, they can put a fit team, and that team is a team of professionals that will wrap around the entire family and ensure that the children and the adults and everyone within the family get treatment and can be healthy, and keep the family whole so it doesn't get broken. We find that those mobile units are much more effective than, you know, having to go somewhere for each type of service, where the mobile units go to that family, and it's much more successful. And that way, we don't have to take so many children away from their families, and those families don't get fractured and they can stay whole. We also have, where we fall short, and I'll be going to the League of Mayors Conference to talk about this, where we fall short is Marchman Act. And a Marchman Act is similar to a Baker where it's an involuntary commitment, but it has to do with an addiction. Currently, no one funds a facility in Pinellas County at all for involuntary treatment for addiction. So if, if I have a family member who's got a serious addiction, and I want to go to the court and get a Marchman Act so that they can get help, in Pinellas County, all we can do, because we don't fund that, is put them in jail, let them dry out, and then they send them out onto the street. That's it. There's nothing more that we do. Hillsborough County funds one, and I know I'm going on, so I'll wrap it up. Hillsborough County funds a Marchman facility, so if somebody has a Marchman done in Hillsborough County, because they fund it, they get, not only do they get put into a treatment center, they get a diagnosis, they get an assessment, they get treatment, and they get referred into a program which they can help them get off their, their addiction. So, so that's the difference between Pinellas and Hillsbury. And it's, most of the state is similar to Pinellas, where they do not fund this. So it's very important, and the cost that is going into every single system is exorbitant. So I'm proud to tell you, we've got sweeping legislation that addressed the incredible shortage of workforce in that area, that addresses the infrastructure problem, and numerous other things that are happening within the mental health industry and sector. I'm also really pleased to tell you that we brought home some really good things. One of them is a lighting project for Madeira Beach, so you did get the funding for that, and I'm sorry I wasn't able to get the other project you wanted, but we'll go for that one next year. We also brought in, St. Pete College will be building a new student center. It's got, they've got the oldest building on Fifth Avenue campus as any state college in the state. And so they're going to get a new student center there, thanks to our delegation. There'll also be some tea groins, and I brought a list, and I'm happy to leave it for you for your records, two and a half pages of items that Pinellas County was able to bring home in the budget. We don't get that, last year we got very little, but this year, the governor was very generous with that veto pen, he didn't use it very often. And so I'm happy to leave that for you for your records. The other stuff that was really, really important was supportive housing to go with it. There's a lot more money in ship and sale, so there's a lot more money for affordable housing that we can use throughout the county to ensure that we, we can address that issue. I believe you're going to see very shortly, we're going to have a workforce shortage. We had that long before the, the bubble burst again, where the cities couldn't get workers to work for the cities. We couldn't get policemen or firemen or, or public workspeople to work, and we couldn't get teachers and nurses to come and work in Pinellas County because the housing was so high. I, I think we're going back on that track again, so affordable housing is going to be very important and critical. The other thing that, I don't want to go too much on, what I guess I would do is say, do you have questions for me? I'm very excited about the stuff that's going on, the ports. The ports are going to drive economic development, and it's the ports that are going to be the catalyst for giving us other economic drivers in the state other than tourism and agriculture. By widening those ports and the dredging them, and allowing the new Pan X ships to come in, and you saw the new cranes came into Tampa, and by putting the ramps that go directly to I-4, to the Leroy Salmon, to 75, we got the trucks out of the local, you know, Ebor City area, and the, the expedience that that has done for unloading ships and getting ships in and out of the port was phenomenal, that the timing was immense. And so that will then generate even, Pinellas County is a huge hub for manufacturing, and I believe it's going to grow as a result of this. And, and so I think you're going to see Florida really grow its manufacturing, our import and export should exponentially. I believe we're in a position to, to take significant business away from Savannah and other ports along the eastern seaboard, and that is nothing but great news for the state of Florida, because it increases our economic drivers, so that when we do have a hurricane or we do have something happen to our agriculture, our tourism industry for a year, we won't have that horrible kind of recession that we would feel before other communities would feel it. So, so I'm excited about that, and I'm going to be quiet and let you ask questions if you have them.
Actually, Representative, you know, as you're watching the excitement grow here in the MPO and PSTA with the idea of waterborne transportation, taxi services, various services, you're seeing what Mayor Kreisman's trying to do between Lincoln, Tampa, Tampa and St. Petersburg, and what we're doing here in Madeira Beach, you know, is there money up there that you can go after to afford those kind of things?
Right. Now, we did get the PSTA express bus that they want from the beaches to downtown, we put in a local project. And we find that we have greater success when we put it in the local project. So for the water ferry, when we proposed it, maybe we just didn't have enough information on it at the time because of the timing, it was not seen in light yet. I think there's, there's potential in the future. I understand the county is looking at their BP money to maybe fund that, they're waiting on a proposal from St. Petersburg. I know Clearwater is looking at some things to make it safer to get on and off Clearwater Beach, because, you know, at this point, a first response could be critical on some of those weekends, because there's such congestion on their beach. So, so I think we have to look at it. Of course, we had sweeping transportation bills, you're going to see a whole lot more, and I know it was recently in the paper, DOT has released their new plan for the Bayside Bridge to get to the interstate, and there's a whole lot of connectivity, the Gandy Boulevard, overpasses and so forth. I believe the proposal that comes with those comes with tolls, but you'll have an option of either taking the toll or to stay on the regular path and, and deal with the stop-and-go lights and the regular traffic. So I know there's a big plan, it's just been released, and I know they're presenting it all around the, the area, so that everyone can get caught up on it, it's been in the news. But I think that's really where DOT is focusing, they're not necessarily focusing on water transit at this point, that I can, I can tell, and I sit on economic development and transportation imports. So at this time, I would say next year maybe, but not this time.
I know it's, it's something new, and the excitement's kind of growing about. Do you have the Commissioners have anything?
Ms. Peters, hi. I just wanted to ask you, going back to the older Americans that we have, now, is this working through any type of facility now in the area, like a hospital, retirement area, any agency like that, or is this just like a overflow from these hospitals, maybe?
No, I, I'm not sure I understand your question. So you're talking about seniors that might have mental illness? Are we going back to mental illness?
Right.
Okay. We do have a really good facility up in Largo for seniors who have, and it's complicated, who have dementia, or Parkinson's, or Alzheimer's, and mental illness, and that just complicates it. So we're lucky that we have a facility nearby, and it's a really quality facility. But it's, this, this, this is a problem across the United States, it's not Florida Central. And what I can tell you is, and I've visited prisons, and I've visited hospitals, and it's, it's a bigger problem than anybody knows or has talked about it, because nobody really talks about it. And so home care is great, as long as the entire family can manage it. And those mobile units can come in and help with those seniors, and what we, we're not there yet, but we're working on it. But in-home care is the best you can do, but you have to recognize that you have the illness, and you have to have somebody that's going to help them take their medications. Often, people with a severe mental illness won't take it. We're working on it, and, and some of the pharmacy companies have come up with injectable drugs that last 30 days that can make the treatment more sustainable, but it's, it's something that we still need to work farther on. And the senior population is not exempt from this illness. Matter of fact, most signs and symptoms of mental illness do not start until age 14 to 24. And the number two cause of death for children 15 to 24 is suicide, number one is car accidents. So suicide, it's, this is a big problem among all populations, and the seniors are no exception.
Thank you.
We've got a lot of work to do. We've got a lot of work to do.
Do you have any questions for?
Representative Peters, I know we're meeting at the end of the week at Palms of Pasadena, I believe.
Yes.
Is Palms of Pasadena going to be maybe at the spearhead of getting some of the mental illness started here in Pinellas County?
Well, that's an HCA hospital, and HCA actually has the facility for seniors that I was talking about. I'm not, I don't think that was the purpose of that meeting, but we certainly, you know, I'm going to talk about it because it's what I've been working on so intensely. There's more stuff in healthcare that has to come with it to ensure quality of care because if someone's going through cancer and they, you know, say they have brain cancer and they go through horrible surgeries, and this, I met with All Children's Hospital today, and the children, they've such trauma, and they don't know how to deal with the trauma, and the depression gets so bad. And it's the same with seniors, same to everyone. But we don't have a healthcare system that wraps counseling and psychology around it. And if we can do that, the recovery time is better, the whole healing time is better, the depression issue doesn't come about. So, I can see us talking about that because we haven't even addressed that, and I had a long couple-hour meeting this morning starting that conversation. So, but there's other groups that I'm meeting with. This is important to you. I know Vice Mayor Poe, this is important to you, and that's a short-term rental issue. And I know I'm meeting with some folks this week to talk about strategies on the short-term rental issue. I have nothing to back this up except that every year that we have a bill, we can't get it heard in a committee. So, there seems to be little interest in leadership to reverse that language that was passed in 2011. And I was the mayor of South Pasadena at that time, and I thought that was overreaching on the state to tell cities that they couldn't put in ordinances on short-term rentals. And that if you had one, you were grandfathered in, but if you wanted to change it, then you lost it all completely. And so, I know there's problems with the city. What we have to do is come up with a good, sound, data-driven decision and strategic plan on how to present that to leadership to at least get them to hear it in committee and see if we can't move it along. They felt it was prohibitive on free enterprise, property rights and so forth, and so, that's our, that's our issue. But I know some cities, the legal costs are exorbitant, and I don't think that those unintended consequences that the cities are experiencing was looked at or considered at the time of passing that bill. So, if we can get good data to help drive that, and I know Vice Mayor, you probably already have some already. If you do, I know you worked on water, but I thought you were working on short-term rentals as well. So, if we can have that information, I think it will help us in those conversations and see if we can't move that forward.
Fantastic. Thank you again.
I suggest that you ask our city clerk for a copy of the ordinance that we just passed.
Okay.
Quite a few good ideas in there, and better explanations than what we normally have.
Okay. And if you could send that to me, that'd be wonderful. I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Do you have a second? Could you stay at the podium for a minute? We have a presentation to make here.
Really? Well, you just surprised me. Thank you, sir.
No, please, Kathleen.
Oh, you mean, I get one of those? I didn't even have one of those when I was mayor. Are you kidding?
Well, Representative Peters, I've known you for five years now, and when I first met Representative Peters, she was the mayor of South Pasadena. And I walked in my first mayor's council meeting, and she said, "You need to do this. You need to get on this board. You need to be, get on this board."
I didn't do that. I said, "You need to do this, and you need to do that."
Well, Kathleen, I want to thank you very much, and again, the appropriations that you did for Madeira Beach this year is outstanding. It helps us be able to do other things on our budget. And an appreciation from the city of Madeira Beach, the mayor and his commission. I would like to present you the key to the city of Madeira Beach.
I truly appreciate it.
Sheriff here. Sheriff. Sheriff, will you get, Commissioner, excuse me, Representative, have anybody take a photo?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't.
Jim Cox.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Kathleen, thank you, and congratulations, and thank you once again.
Thank you, sir, ma'am.
Representing us here in District 69. Thank you.
Mayor, it's always so good to see you. Vice Mayor. And Shane, it's always good to see you.
Thank you.
Do you want a copy of the?
Yes, if you could leave it with the city clerk, please. Mr. Mayor, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention, you know, the representative was very humble about helping us with a lighting project, and when you say lighting project, you know, the dollar amount was somewhat substantial. She helped us get, I think, probably our first state appropriation of $350,000. So, it's a relatively sizable project, and I've got the easy job of making the application, but you have to have somebody champion it at the state level. And Representative Peters and Senator Brandis were key components of making that happen. And so, for a small city and a small budget, relatively speaking, $350,000 is quite a chunk of change, and so, we certainly appreciate our friends at the state level.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman, for mentioning that. Next, the diashlog. Do we need to go up to diashlog? Any commissioners? Steve, would you like to?
Steve is here to walk you through it, but she's got it fresh on the top of her head, she said, and can rifle you through it in a matter of seconds.
Pretty much, it looks worse than it is. The first thing you have is an update on the landscape medians. The city manager will actually be going over this short update with you during his reports and correspondence. The second item is a correction. I actually found a miscalculation in one of the tallied votes for the planning commission appointment. It did not impact the overall appointment. It didn't impact it, but I just wanted to make sure that the note, that the correction was noted and everything else was recalculated to make sure all the numbers were correct. The second, the third item is related to the Holton property. Those were the application packages that were not included in the first agenda packet I delivered to you last week. They were emailed to you last night, and that's all that is. And the last one relates to the vehicle replacement. These are the authorizations of expenditures for each vehicle that's related to the budget amendment resolution. So, any questions, just let me know.
Thank you very much. A couple of comments, a couple of comments.
Mr. Mayor, you were going to take those two items up first?
That's right. Two under new business, development agreement, Holiday Isle Marina. Go ahead, both of them. First item, number one, development agreement, the Holiday Isle Marina. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I would like you to consider continuing this to the May 10 meeting in order to make sure that the public has been properly notified of the issues on that particular agenda item. So, I'm looking for a motion to postpone to May 10.
At this time, I'll entertain that motion.
I still move, Mr. Mayor.
Sir. I have a motion, a second. Is there any comments from staff?
Motion's for approval.
Okay.
Recommendations for approval.
Is there any further comment? Would City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Oh, I'm asleep. Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
All right.
Next, public comment. Public comment is on matters pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Would anybody like to speak? Mr. Hendricks.
John Hendricks, 569 Normandy Road, Madeira Beach. First of all, I'd say, I'd like to say that key is way too big. You're never going to carry them on their keychains. You need to either get smaller locks or something. I've been a resident of Madeira Beach, owned property in Madeira Beach for 30 years. We didn't progress at all for many of those years. In fact, it's only in the past few years that we've started progressing. Four years ago, we had a problem with a commissioner, with several commissioners meddling in the business of the day-to-day operation of this city. Because of their meddling, we lost Mike Maximo, Denise Schilling, Deborah Klein, Bill Mallory, Monica Mitchell, Michael Conley, and Paula Cohen. All of these were good people. They were all forced out by meddling of a commissioner, two commissioners. The commissioners are not supposed to meddle in the day-to-day operation of this city. These two commissioners tore this city apart. Because of that, a group of citizens got together and formed a committee. We pushed for their ouster off the city commission. I think everybody's aware of all that that went on. This is happening again in this city. It's happening because of one commissioner. That commissioner, who was not a commissioner at that time, supported the two commissioners that left office. She supported them in the meddling that went on. She supported a number of things that were detrimental to this city. And she spoke about our group to tell people to go shove sand. If there's a question of, on that, I have it right here in an email by you, Ms. Poe.
As a resident?
Yes. Now, there's another group together fighting this city again. This city doesn't need to be torn apart again. The new group will not have put a name on themselves. I don't know of one individual's name that has come up as being a part of this committee, only a number of an attorney's office. I don't understand it. It's time for Madeira Beach to move ahead. It's time for Madeira Beach to cooperate with each other. Ms. Poe, you are tearing this city apart. And in my opinion, as a commissioner, you need to resign.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. You can't get personal, Hendricks. Don't get personal.
Okay. I will say Ms. Poe needs to resign as commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is John Neff. I'm a resident, taxpayer and voter. Live at 317 Rex Place, Madeira Beach Yacht Club. And I understand, Mayor, that soon you're going to be a member of the yacht club, so I certainly welcome you as a nearby neighbor, okay? I have heard, though, in recent days, neighborhood rumors that have upset me greatly, greatly. As a former high school teacher of U.S. history and government for over 42 years, I believe strongly in clean government, which I'm sure all you do. I want to be able to dispel those rumors tonight to make sure that we are moving in the direction of clean and honest government here in Madeira Beach. I'm concerned about dispelling rumors of connection and influence. So, I would like the answers to what I think are two very simple questions. To you, city manager, Mr. Crawford, do you live in a condo owned by Bill Carnes, the developer? And to you, Mr. Mayor, honorable mayor, do you or have you ever worked in any capacity as an employee of Bill Carnes or one of his related companies? And again, I would say, and I think all of you would agree, that the key to good local government, the two essential words are integrity and honesty. And I will use the remainder of my time, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Crawford, for you to give an answer, and I hopefully, an answer of no.
Absolutely not, sir. I've already had that discussion with the city attorney.
I didn't hear your answer.
I said, "No," and I've already had that discussion with the city attorney when it was asked by him.
Mr. Crawford?
This is not a question and answer period. This is a public comment period.
I don't want to answer the question. Mr. City Attorney, so.
But I understand that, but with regard to Mr. Crawford or anybody else on this, on the dais, should they be asked questions or not? This is not the opportunity to, uh...
Mr. City Attorney, I get his public comment, but the man's, call me out, so you know what, I'm going to, if he's going to call me out, I'm going to let him call me out and I'll answer the question. So, we're both not going to talk at the same time, or I will have you removed from this room.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Miller.
Steve Miller, Harbor Drive. I'm back again, and I will take every opportunity I can get to address you, all right? I have a couple of things to say. One, I would like to clarify the rules that these meetings are held under. With my understanding, that this portion of the, of the meeting was open debate on things that are not, open questions or comments on things that are not on the current agenda.
It's public comment on?
On things that are not on the current agenda. And my understanding was that for the agenda items, there was a procedure in which they were brought up, they were, motions were made, discussions was made by the committee members, and then it was thrown open to discuss that agenda item by the public.
Yes, sir. And that's called, is there any further comment?
Is that true?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I would like to just clarify that because it didn't seem to be in effect on the last, because that was an agenda item, there were motions made, there, you know, and it was, it was, that really isn't what I want to talk about.
You have a comment to make right now, sir.
I can talk about anything I want to in these three minutes, all right?
Logs, it's city business, yes.
But it is not, well, this is city business. This is how you run these meetings, all right? Now, let me get back to the special area plan, all right? This is a document. This is a legal document. This is something that you are responsible for following and developing these, and these developments. This says here, that is, when mixed-use development is proposed as follows, the requirement to calculate the maximum density and intensity proportional to the development is not applied. Number one, when permanent residential and temporary lodging are done together. Number two, when permanent residential and commercial are done together. Number three, when temporary lodging and commercial are done together. There is nothing in here when all three are done together, all right? If all three are done together, it does not apply. You've aggregated all these lots, and now you've applied these, this non-proportional evaluation to all this development, and it's wrong. It's right here in this document, all right? Let's see, I have another minute. I'm going through this document. I pointed out earlier that on this document in Table 1, it specifies that within this town center, three floors above level is the maximum that's allowed. In this statement here, increased building height without the need for a PD zoning process or variance approval is also an important development incentive. There were things in there that allowed them to go more than what they used to have allowed. And it also says, refer to Table 2 for building height limits in the special area plan districts. I haven't been able to find Table 2 in this document. I've asked the city clerk provide me with the latest document. I'm going to keep coming and bringing this up to you, that you cannot ignore this at your leisure. This is a legal document. It is part of the planning. I've, I'm talking to the Pinellas County Planning Commission, and we're going to pursue this, that you are not obeying this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and Madeira Beach staff. My name's Missy Han. I'm the president of the Madeira Beach Treasure Island Chamber of Commerce. So, I'm here to speak on behalf of the businesses. A lot of them, or a great portion of them, do not own in Madeira Beach. However, their businesses are in Madeira Beach. So, on their behalf, I'm saying that the chamber is in favor of responsible development. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Han.
Yes, ma'am. What she just said triggered in my mind.
Ma'am, we need your name and address again, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kim DeBois, 582 Crystal Drive, Madeira Beach.
Thank you.
The commerce that takes place in John's Pass right now, having...
The commerce that takes place in John's Pass, right now, having the marine zoning that you're thinking of changing, for the boats to be able to go there, fuel up, go back to John's Pass, and for revenue for the restaurants, when you have condominiums, people cook in their condominiums, if you have hotels and motels instead, they're more likely to go to restaurants. Also, now that the economy seems to have picked up, the intercoastal is like I-75. I've never seen so many boats, motorboats, sailboats, et cetera. I mean, I don't know how they don't collide, but now that there's this upswing, now is the time. And I know a bureaucracy is slow, and you did your planning two or three years ago, but with this new uptick and use of boats, then a marine-zoned area where it is can now, it seems to me, to be the best time to utilize it for fueling, refueling, having a marina, having boat motels, et cetera, and interacting with John's Pass to really maximize revenue for the city. And the congestion, recently, I've had to go back and forth over that bridge at rush hour. It is really, really bad, and if you have condominiums, it will be a standstill. You really will have to look at widening the bridge, and nobody wants to do that. It's also, I've noticed, it's always when school lets out, I see all of those children coming across from that area. If you could put your condominium there and move the school over to where the old Walmart was, it would take care of a safety issue. You could have your condominiums, and we could maximize the marine revenues that are now, just now, really picking up.
My name is Walter Joder, and I live at 261 Medallion Boulevard, Madeira Beach Yacht Club. I just have a few statements that I have to get off my chest. I've been coming to Florida since 1953 with my mom, dad, and my sister. Years went by. I was coming down here with my friends, got married, came down with my wife, had four children, came down here with all the children. We started on the East Coast, Lauderdale, Miami, Daytona Beach, then up the West Coast, and the West Coast seemed like the right place. We've stayed in St. Petersburg Beach, Treasure Island, and Holiday Inn across the street. We watched them build the Madeira Beach Yacht Club, and I believe it was '72, and our dream was someday to be able to buy there. But with four children in the back of a station wagon, it was almost beyond belief. But luckily, in 1990, we were down here on vacation. My wife bought the checkbook without me knowing about it, and she says, "Let's just go look what's for sale at the yacht club." Well, before we left that vacation, we bought a unit in the yacht club in 1990. I retired in '94. We've been six-month snowbirds, I guess you'd call it, every year since '94. We do not rent. And the reason we chose Madeira Beach was the atmosphere. We loved it. It had a small-town atmosphere. I definitely agree that Madeira Way does need improvements. I do not think it needs the extent of the buildings that they're going to be putting in. If I wanted to, if we wanted to be in Clearwater, we'd have bought in Clearwater. If we wanted to be in St. Pete's Beach, we'd have bought in St. Pete's Beach. I agree, we want to get money for Madeira Beach, revenue, taxes, everything. But I honestly do believe that the size of what I'm reading about is just way too much. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name's Leanne Nguyen. I live on 13027 Pelican Lane, Madeira Beach. I want to thank you, everyone, each of you, for being here and for your time. You get more complaint than applause. And again, because of my busy schedule, I apologize. I have to be here to complain. One thing is that I do believe in having a good time, and we're right on John's Pass. However, the noise has amplified a little bit too loud, and I'm just asking, please just low, lower the volume a bit. Be respectful to our residents. When we come there, we want to enjoy ourselves, but at the same time, please close it down when it needs to be closed down and lower the volume. I'm not asking to do anything but just to lower the volume, to enjoy each other and be respectful for each of us citizens. And I believe that, thank you so much again for even thinking about having a big trashcan that make it clean up the place up and on that street in Pelican, so that way we will have more tourists going through that route, and then as our traffic, our revenue is going up, that'd be a wonderful thing. Thank you so much, and I hope you be considerate of those two things. It's just to lower the volume, that's all. I'm not asking for anything, just to be respectful. When I need to sleep around nine, because I work as a nurse, I wake up at 6 o'clock, and so that's all I'm asking. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chuck DeRoller, 179 Medallion Boulevard. I have two things that I wanted to bring up. The first one is regarding the planned development. There is a saying, too much of a good thing doesn't always result in good. Our city management tells residents that they are for responsible development and that they support the majority of the residents. On the other hand, they're willing to change zoning requirements that allow developers to do what they, whatever they wish to do. This doesn't sound like a good thing to me. The second thing is regarding the city reserves. I thought I saw recently an article from the financial manager stating that the city fathers are depleting our reserves at an alarming rate. They used to be at eighty percent, and now they're being worn down to a very critical level of seventeen percent, which is the minimum that is required. Doesn't sound like good financial planning to me. Thank you very much.
My name's Pete Trot, and 378 145th Avenue, Madeira Beach. Couple of issues. Mr. Trask covered the other night, all legal, this and that, and whatever. When you take public money, money, taxes, and whatever, I think you need to apply a little higher personal value, and I think the legal is maybe the very minimum. But anyway, I think personal is super, super important. I don't like to hear all these innuendos. Number two, does anybody remember meeting Mr. Archibald, or Mr. Welch, or Mr. Stewart? The fact is, the Holden properties used to be where the old bridge was. We have a bridge that's sixty years old, always under repair, often not working, and we're on a hurricane evacuation route here. What in the world would be wrong with taking where the old bridge was and doing what they did in John's Pass, put in a proper evacuation route so that we could even have two bridges? The fact is, we have a city manager that has expertise on where do you find money, and how do you do this and that, whatever, but I think state money, or county money, or whatever. And I think the planning should not be, how much can we make out of this? I think I would like to see Mr. Holden's name like Mr. Archibald's, like Mr. Welch, like Mr. Stewart. And whether he donates it or not, but I think that there's money that would be able to buy the property at a reasonable rate and perpetuate Mr. Holden's name. He'd been here for hundreds of years or so. I think the need for alternate evacuation route is paramount. I think to take that, and when we have the Old Salt Fishing Tournament, they do a great job, however, all of a sudden, we got another twelve policemen trying to work out, how the heck do we get these people on and off? We bust them from the school, we do all kinds of things, but I think Mr. Holden deserves to have a causeway with his name.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Commissioners, Robert Preston, 425 Bay Shore. Today, I was trying to go through the city documents and stuff, and your meeting moments. In this day and age, I find it unacceptable not to have hyperlinks for your ordinances and stuff. It should be just, you should be able to click on it, and that ordinance comes up. There's no excuse not to have that for your agenda items, your topics. It should come up if it's part of the city government and in their repertoire of information. The hyperlinks are very important, because it's hard to get through the city's documents to find what you want. It's difficult. I know we're not supposed to talk about the Holden project, but I was looking at the photos again, and I still see twelve stories. That includes the rooftop mechanical building. And then, third, it seems to me, it's just to me, my opinion only, that the majority of the community no longer has a voice, and it's a select few that is driving what's happening. And the public as a whole just doesn't have a voice anymore. And again, with the information, you're postponing till May. I think it's too little, too late. I mean, you've already demonstrated that you've already made up your minds, and it doesn't make any difference what the public has to say.
No, no, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Back forty years ago, I bought a...
Excuse me, Mr. Merrill. If you could just state your name for several...
I'm sorry, Marv Merrill, 581 Crystal Drive. Forty years ago, I bought a, my wife and I bought a property here in Madeira Beach, a home, and we moved here thirty years ago. And in the nineties, I served six years on the city commission. Just two items I'd like to discuss briefly is, first of all, a gentleman got up here and talked about the fact that the citizens were getting organized and because of all these buildings going up and so on, I would suggest to him, that's the way a democracy works. You do get organized, you make your feelings known. The other issue I would like to briefly comment is that he also criticized Commissioner Poe. My comment there is that the city manager does report to the city commission, and she's an elected official, and she saw something that was wrong, and she had everything, all legal rights to do what she did, and I commend her. I don't necessarily agree everything with everything she does, but I certainly feel she had a right to do what she did in regard to the city manager.
My name's Frank Stegmeier, 15401 Second Street East. I built my house in Madeira Beach in 1987. I've been to one city meeting since then, because I've been happy with how this city's been run, and I'm here today, short and sweet, extremely opposed to the direction you're taking my town to. I don't want to see that high density. I don't like driving in Clearwater. I don't want to be there. When I drive down the beach, I hate the tall buildings. This town had ten-story buildings. We see them out here on the beach. They were built, and the law was changed for a reason, because the citizens of this town did not want to go in that direction. And these people are here because they don't want to go in that direction either.
Would like to speak next. Yes, sir.
As I said last month, I'm slow, I'm not any faster.
Can everybody hear me? My name is Reese Noran. I live in 363 Medallion Boulevard over in the Madeira Beach Yacht Club. These other people who have spoken are friends and neighbors of mine. We may not agree on everything. Most of my past comments have been in regard to how much the wife and I found Madeira Beach to be a wonderful place to live, and I went through a whole litany of all the places that we have lived, including the East Coast, the West Coast, the Midwest, the Rust Belt, the California, what's supposed to be the prime waterfront, and Madeira Beach stood out as our little paradise. The parts that I didn't speak to are how cities and communities die. And Chuck mentioned the economics as far as the reserves are concerned, but it isn't just reserves. It's property that doesn't generate income for a city or a community dooms it to death. And we have seen many places in many states, starting with my home state of New Jersey, and of course, there's Detroit, Michigan, and even the southern area of San Diego Bay. I didn't dwell on those, but the economics of change, development, and progress are also very, very important. I don't want to see Madeira Beach turn into rotten wood, crumpled sidewalks, chipped paint, just in the name of quaint. Quaint is a fine thing, but it's, it also needs to be maintained, or it becomes an eyesore and a detriment and economically disastrous to a small community. We believe in progress. When I stood up to speak last month, one of the developers said, "Oh, no, here comes an old guy that doesn't want to see change." That's not true. We have welcomed change all our lives, and we welcome change here. Yeah, it might need to be fine-tuned, if there's room to fine-tune. You can't make a profitable hotel with six rooms. That's called a mom and pop, or a bread and breakfast. So we are in favor of the development. What has transferred in the last thirty years that we have lived here, by the way, this is our anniversary for thirty years, because we closed on our condominium in April of eighty-six. But the developments that have happened in here, I think, are all for the good. Just take a look at this Rock Park. That's one of the developments. These are not people who are carpetbaggers that are coming from out of state and to rape and pillage and take away our... and pillage and take away our fine, these people are lifelong residents. Yeah, they might have made a pretty good living out of it, but they've worked hard at it. They're as much rooted to this place as we are. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jeff Betjams, yep, the real estate guy who always talks pro-development. But I'm going to do a caveat to that a little bit tonight. Being in Madeira Beach, living around here, working in the middle beaches, I don't want Clearwater Beach either, right? Don't want St. Pete Beach either, and just like everybody else in this room. However, I think it's important because sometimes things get pulled off track. And the comments that I'm hearing tonight, I'd like to kind of put back on track from at least my perspective. This is never going to be Clearwater Beach, and that's what makes this area special because there's only two parcels in one section of this town that I think we all need to remember, that this density is allowed. And it's on the Holton parcel, and it's on the Carnes property as well. Those are the only two places that this intensity is allowed on purpose. So it does not become Clearwater Beach. These two parcels are not next to a lot of residential, and it's next to as few as possible. And I think sometimes we lose track that this is not a blanket, oh, my gosh, let's build tall all over town. This is responsible development that's already approved, and it's not going to turn this into Clearwater Beach. So I think it's important that we remember that, and I think it is responsibly done. And I think you guys have done a great job on pushing it through. And like the gentleman before just said, these are not people from out of town looking to make a quick buck and build a skyscraper and leave. These are people that are going to live here and love it, and I think we should give them a little more support because they could do a lot more than they're doing. They've already scaled it back, and I just want, sometimes we need to remember that. So that's what I'd like to say.
My name is Steven Petro, and I live at 15443 Madeira Beach, Second Street East, which belonged to Mrs. Varnador. I've always had respect and love and admiration for Mrs. Varnador, and she was a great person. She fought a lot of things in the City Hall, and I have a lot of recording tapes of things she fought against. Now, I've been coming down here since 1978, when my mother bought a house down here. And I've seen the development and how people stop things and the progression. And I agree that Madeira Beach is a unique place. It's not Clearwater, not anywhere else. It's Madeira Beach. And I love this beach. I want to retire here. I want to live here full-time. And I see the development that you want to do here. But every time I try to drive across this bridge, either it goes up for boats, which they don't stack, they seem to let one go through, and then they put the bridge up, they stop it, put another bridge up. And I find that going across this road is bad enough. If you do such a major development here on the main road, it will be nothing but chaos to go across there. Going during school times is probably the worst time, so I avoid that. So looking at it, I mean, I don't mind development. I don't mind a part of the development, but what you're proposing is a major development for this area, which will affect everybody. I hear all my neighbors talking, and they all disagree what the city council wants to do. But I mean, we're voted in, city council, to represent us. And if your constituents ask you to do a certain things, you should agree to do those things, not decide what you want to do. Now, Mrs. Shantz, you own property over here. You have a major interest over here. I don't think you should be involved in voting or whatever goes on with here because it affects you directly. I look at development, yes, we should do some development here, but not at the catastrophic point that you want to do a major development. Also, John's Pass was a major area that was supposed to be developed and done all down there, and that would be like part of the beach that we would all go down to. And then, this here was more residential. I just see that city council is going one way and the public going another way. And every time I come down here, I hear, well, we're doing this, we're doing that, and things are going through. So all I want to do is voice opinion that Madeira Beach is a unique place. We should sort of keep it that way and not do the major development that you want to do. Okay? Thank you.
My name's Mary Neff. I live at 317 Rex Place at the Yacht Club. And I'd like to just say one thing. I don't think there's a person in this building that is against developing the town center or the property. We want it back to the 2012 zoning where we can have maybe not a six-room hotel, a six- or five-story hotel. We want the density so that it can accommodate the sewage, the portable water, the electricity. I don't know how many of you were here the night of the carnival, but when the band started on Earth Day at 9:00, it blew all the lights out of the entire yacht club, the whole park, City Hall, and that's a band. There are no, as far as I know, there are going to be no impact studies done on those specific areas because our new governor has done away with the commission that asks for those studies. I think it would be a good investment for the city to pay for impact studies for all of those things. None of us are against the development. We want reasonable development. Thank you.
My name is Gay Prince. I live on Marguerite Drive. As I was sitting here listening to people, some thoughts came together. And speaking in percentiles, there are two developers, and I'm not sure how many people own property and are your constituents, but it seems to me the reverse. One commissioner listening to the larger percentile of people not wanting the development. My other point is if there's two developers owning property, getting special, different planning and zoning, I'd like my property and other people's properties to be zoned differently, and let's put up a hotel on my place. Thanks. Or the tea that went into the harbor for Boston is Florida's going to be oranges and coconuts.
Anyone else? I'm going to go and take two more comments, and I'm going to close public comment. Yes, sir. He had to, excuse me, ma'am, he had to stand up first.
My name is Joe Martin. I live at 1423 150th Avenue. I wanted to bring the attention to the commission that having attended two Planning Commission meetings, that I was astounded really that the members of that commission did not even ask one question of anybody who made a deputation to the commission during those meetings. I was more astounded that the next meeting that was held in front of you people, two members of that commission stood before you and exclaimed what a great job was being done in the planning of the new developments, that they were all in favor of it. I really took an offense to that because I felt that they were there as unbiased members to listen to the input, to make a decision on their own as to what should happen as far as the planning was concerned. But they had already made up their mind, and they came here and told you how great a job you were doing. And they still have to make a decision on this next development. I think they should be excused from the commission because they've already committed. They are unbiased in their, excuse me, they're biased in their approach to the whole development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Everett?
My name's Karen Para. I live at 582 Crystal Drive. I live at the end of Crystal Island, the end Nancy doesn't see. I want to know what I have to do to get some new no-wake signs. Nobody pays attention to the wake sign. So I sit out there on Sundays with the horn. I'm the lady with the horn for all of you guys. Because nobody gives a damn about the wake, no-wake signs. So that's my first, my first thing. The second thing is, I'm not crazy about the development. You guys want to put it up? I'm not crazy about, you know, isn't that gorgeous over there? That's a great example of what we're going to look like, okay? You came down here because it's a beach. So did the rest of us. We're not here because we want to live in anything but beach. So if we want to live in the beach town, let's do some things for the boaters. I would like some moorings out there. I would like the city to put moorings out and put dinghy docks. I'm a sailboater. Be nice to have some dinghy docks instead of having to go to McDonald's. I would also like to have enough restaurants underneath whatever you're going to build over there that I can finally go find a restaurant other than Sloppy Joe's to go eat on the water. I would like to be able to take a boat and go eat on the water. And how many places are there? There's not that many anymore due to a tax problem and insurance problems. So I'd like to see a bunch of restaurants over there underneath all those buildings. That way, we'd have lots of jobs for the waitresses and the cooks and the chefs and all those trucks that are going to come and deliver all this food, the food. But we'll have more jobs if we had not so many condos. 50% condo, 50% motel, we got a shot at some more jobs. Now, I don't know where Holiday Isles is after listening to all of you. I thought I knew where it was. Apparently, I don't. Is it, can I, is it where the-
Old Liver Rocks.
It is the Liver, okay. All right. That's what I thought it was. All right. And we've got, until we get the rental issues straightened out, now where I live, there's, nobody's going to, nobody's going to rent for two weeks where I live. But we're going to build a whole bunch of condos. People are going to buy them thinking that they're going to be able to rent them out for two, three months a year, and then they're going to find out they can or can't do it. So that needs to get straightened out, too. So it looks like, unfortunately, we got a lot more questions here than we have answers. But I really think it would be nice if we could widen the road. These guys that want to build all this property, let's make that six lanes out there, widen that bridge. Because when that bridge doesn't work, I'm getting real tired of going to Treasure Island. Thank you.
My name is Jim Everett, 15458 First Street East, a resident of Madeira Beach, and also a member of the Planning Commission. I guess there's a little confusion about the property that we're talking about. These two properties are specifically zoned to address development. And we, I've been on the Planning Commission almost five years, and we spent the last four and a half developing the proper ordinances to position these properties, hoping that we would be able to attract some development. That was the mission that we were given. Also, I'm offended that I'm not allowed to express my opinion as a resident. So I've certainly evaluated the projects, and I've come to a conclusion, just like everyone else has. And if it happens to differ from yours, I'm sorry, but that's the way it goes. Thank you.
And I'm going to end public comment. There was a couple of emails. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read the emails?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There's an email from Ginger Tolliver. It's dated April the 12th, 1:51 PM. Says, Dear Mayor Palladino, as many of you know, I work for the Rays and am not able to change my schedule at such a short notice. I will be unable to attend tonight's meeting. Therefore, I would like my comments to be read into the minutes for tonight's meeting. I am and will continue to be opposed to both condominium and hotel developments and was ready to support the lawsuits with a sizable check. In fact, I was ready to mail the check when I read the account of the last meeting in the Tampa Bay Times. Immediately tore up the check which was written for $10,000. I want no part in demeaning Shane Crawford. I consider him to be by far the best city manager that we have ever had. He has brought to this city, he has brought the city out of the dark ages. What he does in his private life is no business of ours, just as my private life is no business of anyone else's. I feel that these innuendos have no part in our government, and this day of social media madness, it has cast aspirations on his and his secretary's life that cannot be undone. They will follow them forever and affect their families. This is not right. This needs to be rectified immediately. Shane, please do not resign. Remember, if you do, your accusers win. You are the best thing that has happened to our city. I will always support you and your right. Sincerely, Ginger Tolliver, 814 Bay Point Drive. The next email is from Brandy Jessup. It's dated April 12th, 1:53 PM. Hi, Shane. My name is Brandy, and I have been a Madeira Beach, Crystal Island resident for approximately five years. Prior to that, I lived in Seminole for the last 20-plus years. My husband and I love this city now more than ever and support everything you have done and continue to do. 10 years ago, I never imagined that I would want to live in Madeira Beach, let alone raise our son here. It's hard for me to believe that people adamantly oppose the developments that are in the works. In my opinion, the former Liver Rocks property has been an eyesore, and the plans to redevelop that land will be a tremendous improvement for our city. I also support the plans to redevelop in the downtown area. I know for a fact that several of our neighbors support the redevelopment of these areas and look forward to having places in Madeira Beach where we can dine, outside, shop, et cetera. Lastly, I hope that you and the Commissioners continue to improve our city and make it a place where people want to live and spend their vacation. On a side note, I would really love to see a restaurant finally built on the beach near Gulf and 140th. My dream to walk to a nice restaurant and have a glass of wine. We will try to attend tonight's meeting or another one in the near future to voice our support. Thanks for all of your hard work. Regards, Brandy Jessup. Mr. Mayor, there was a third one, but it was by Mr. Noran, who was already-
Got it, okay.
We don't need to read that one, then? Because he's already spoken.
He's already spoke, so that's the same.
Those were the emails.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that closes public comment, and we're moving on to the consent agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I still move, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, what's that?
We're going to, we would ask to pull number one so that we can go ahead. If you appoint Ingrid, that we can go ahead and swear her in.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda by pulling number one for further evaluation.
All right. The second.
The second.
The second to, for the consent, for the consent agenda items two, three, and four.
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think we have some people exiting. Maybe it's-
Well, we take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute recess.
Can I do that with a motion on the floor?
Do you have a motion on the floor? Why don't you just go ahead and finish the motion, and then we take the break?
Okay.
So you want to call the motion, then?
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second?
Yes, we have a second.
So you want to-
Then call the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Call the motion. The vote?
Go ahead.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shantz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Right now, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Right now, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
All right, we're reconvened at seven forty-eight. All right, we're reconvened at seven forty-eight. Next item, from number one, from the consent agenda, is the appointment of Ingrid Biro. Last name? Spilvy. Okay, sorry about that. To the planning commission vacancy for the remainder of a two-year term ending in August two thousand seventeen. Mr. City Attorney, is there any swearing in, or is there anything you need to do?
Yeah, I'd just like you to go ahead and have your motion and second and appointment.
And then I will go ahead and swear her in.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain the motion.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from staff?
The process was followed. The city clerk's office took care of tallying the points, and there was a clear frontrunner. And that is who is before you tonight, so staff recommendation is for approval.
All right, is there any further comment? Okay, just need the city clerk, or do you need to swear in, or is there any?
Go ahead and take the vote.
Now, city clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Hodges, yes. Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lester?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Mayor, I'm gonna go ahead and swear her in then.
And you're lucky, Tom usually makes you bring your own Bible to swear in on.
All righty, we're going ahead and registering, and I repeat after me. I am Ingrid Pharoah Spilvy.
I am Ingrid Pharoah Spilvy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Florida. The Charter.
The Charter.
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach.
The Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
As a member of the planning commission.
As a member of the planning commission.
For the City of Madeira Beach.
For the City of Madeira Beach.
To the best of my ability.
My ability.
And the manner provided by law.
And the manner provided by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll leave you to fill out the form, and the city clerk will memorize it for you.
Ingrid, congratulations. All right, next unfinished business. Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-two. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-two. An ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending section eighty-two dash two of the Code of Ordinances to create a definition for residential property and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-six, I'm sorry, two thousand sixteen dash zero-two by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that this commission pass ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-two on second and final reading.
Second.
Is there any comments from staff?
Recommendations for approval?
Is there any further comment? Mr. Miller.
What is the definition of residential property? I mean, what is the detail behind us? What is changing?
The city code did not have a definition of residential property, and so we're adding a definition. I'll read it to you. Residential property means property which is zoned R-one, R-two, or R-three, and which is used for residential use, or which is vacant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any further comment? City clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lester?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Next ordinance, two thousand sixteen dash zero-three. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-three. An ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter forty-two of the Code of Ordinances to recreate an article prohibiting and regulating the overnight abandonment of personal property on the public beaches of the city, and to be commonly referred to as the Madeira Beach Leave No Trace Ordinance, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-three. I did want to bring to your attention that we've renumbered some of the paragraphs in it, but it's the exact same ordinance as you see it. I just wanted to make sure it was sitting properly within Article Three, so I renumbered the paragraphs.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance two zero-one-six dash zero-three on the second and final reading.
I second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from staff?
Recommendations for approval?
Is there any further comment? Mr. Miller.
I'm really not trying to be a pest, but I would like to say I'm not a naysayer. I heartily approve of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. City clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schatz? Commissioner Lester?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Next ordinance, two thousand sixteen dash zero-four. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-four. An ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending chapter seventy-eight of the Code of Ordinances to create a section providing for unobstructed use of public docks and boat-launching ramps, and restrictions to the securing of or tying of vessels to public property, and providing for an effective date. That was the second and final reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-four by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance two thousand sixteen dash four. Be thousand on second and final reading. I second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any comments from staff?
Recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor?
Is there any further comments? Mr. Miller.
I guess I am being a pest, but is this addressing a particular problem, and is there a particular dock that we're talking about in this?
Mr. City Manager, will you bring up the history? Do you remember the history? You got the history on top of that?
I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
What is happening that we have noticed in the past is that people are coming to the shoreline, and they're tying up their dinghies or their boats. They're tying them to trees. They're tying them to benches, city benches. They're tying them to other things that will eventually cause some damage to city property. So the purpose of this ordinance really is to make sure that there is a prohibition from people doing that, and that they actually go ahead and use the city dock facilities to tie up their dinghies and boats.
Is that this dock that we're talking about out here? Is that's one?
Any, any in the city. Any in the city. So we want to make sure that nobody ties up along this peninsula here. But if they're properly tied to the dock in a proper location, then that would be acceptable.
How much they can, how long they can be tied up to this dock?
You know, I didn't research that, sir.
We had a problem at this dock many years ago where somebody, you know, junky old boat, came here and tied up his boat.
And, Mr. Miller, you're right. There actually is, I believe, there's a time, because I think we did it about five years, four, five years ago.
But I mean, I know that this is.
Yes, sir.
It's like it just make it, it sounds like it just make it an open end that somebody can there and tie up the dock, you know, with no repercussions.
No, there's a time restraint on it.
I hope so.
Thank you.
That dock in particular is signed for no docking or no mooring, and we actually take, you know, we'll take calls and say, can we meet somebody here and tie up, you know, for a half an hour, an hour, or something like that, but they're certainly, I'll look it up in the code. I'm sure it's a couple hours or a half a day.
I think it might have been before you even, you came on.
Oh, it's definitely before me.
Yeah, what it was is that somebody was on a sailboat spending the night overnight on it and stuff like that, so it was, and the deputies, we had to do something for the deputies to be able to go ahead and force it.
I can't give you the number of hours, but I can definitely tell you that they can't do it overnight.
And I don't remember exactly, but there is a time restraint on it. All right, let's see, clerk, please help roll.
Commissioner Lester?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Next ordinance, two thousand sixteen dash zero-five. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
All right, I've gotta get to it, just a second, please. Yes, this is ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-five. An ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, creating Article Four of Chapter Forty-two of the Code of Ordinances relating to synthetic drugs, providing for intent, definitions, synthetic drugs, substance determination, prohibited acts, enforcement, and penalties, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash zero-five, and just as some background on this, you remember the city had a workshop. We had the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office appear and testify, or provide to you certain information with regard to synthetic drugs such as Kava and Kratom. What this ordinance is doing is, it's prohibiting the sale of certain synthetic drugs under section forty-two dash forty-three. I'm just gonna read a couple of things here. It says, "The following are prohibited within the city: the possession with intent to sell, sell, distribution, production, or manufacture of synthetic drugs." The second is, "The display for sale, marketing, advertising, or other offer for, or other offer for sale or trade of synthetic drugs in retail stores." And the third is, "Allowing or permitting any person under the age of eighteen to enter or remain on the premises of any place of business selling or displaying drug paraphernalia unless the minor is accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. Such premises must prominently display a sign posted at the entrance stating that drug paraphernalia is located within the premises, and prohibiting persons under eighteen from entering the establishment without their parent or guardian." The rest of the ordinance gets into what is defined as a synthetic drug. In addition to that, it talks about the possibility of having lab testing done, and who's gonna be paying for that, and it's not gonna be the city. And then enforcement and penalties, that if they're caught prohibiting this ordinance, that there is a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars per offense. It also provides that the city can take any other action by law as necessary, for example, filing a cause of action for injunctive or declaratory relief to stop the sale or offering of sale of the synthetic drugs. And I'm not sure if Commissioner Poe has anything additional she wanted to add. She brought this to our attention, and it's really an ordinance that the commissioner was interested in adopting.
And actually, I'm gonna bring something up. We actually had the deputy come out to the mayor's council meeting, do the presentation, and heard a very strong argument against this from Mayor Henderson of Gulfport. It supported, supports the coffee houses, which he called it.
Well, not all of them are bad. That's the only problem. But yes, this was actually brought to us by Deputy Luckett, and then he was able to get the deputy in here, or the lieutenant in here to speak with us on this. And it's gained quite a bit of popularity this year in Tallahassee.
Mr. Mayor, just to bring, you know, Deputy Luckett, feel free to comment on it, but I know firsthand, and I think Commissioner Poe had shared it as well. I mean, this is literally in our backyard, and I wish I could share one of the horror stories with you, but it's bad, and it needs to get under control, and probably pretty quick. Deputy Luckett, I won't call you on the spot, but if there's anything that you'd like to add to it, but during the department meeting this morning, this is one step in the right direction, and so staff recommendation, obviously, is for approval, but I think you as a board are going in the right direction and taking a leadership role in getting this under control.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask you a quick question? You know, as far as a slight molecular alteration to these chemicals or chemical compounds, and law enforcement has found it extremely difficult to bring criminal charges against the manufacturers, producers, and marketers of this product. How does this help us? I know, are we gonna go with a lab test every time we pick a young man or a young woman up? Are we gonna have to do a lab test? And again, I know it's paid for by somebody else, but that would be the evidence in court that we're gonna use?
That would be to the deputies.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Deputy.
You are correct. There are some synthetic drugs out there, and this would be something the sheriff's office would do as a course of their.
Are there any that's legal?
What's that?
Are there any legal synthetic drugs?
There's.
That are out there, you know, and I don't mean from the pharmaceuticals.
It's more of the components that are within the synthetic drugs that are made illegal. So what happens is they will change ingredients often. The answer to your question on testing is yes. If we can identify it through a field test, we, as the sheriff's office, your law enforcement contract, would send it in, have it tested for one of those synthetic substances, and if it came back positive, then we would go about going after the person. So they may not be physically arrested that day, but that's on a criminal side of the house, not the ordinance, I think, that you're looking at.
So this ordinance is gonna help you in the future to alleviate this from the streets, or try to?
A lot of the synthetic drug ordinances out there do, and the state statutes, as the commissioner mentioned, are being changed and modified constantly to try to keep up with the ever-changing. This would make it more local for you, to where you might have, my understanding would be, Mr. Trash, you might wanna address that, you would have some remedies within the city if they violated those laws as well, beyond just criminal, what we would go after.
Is this ordinance able to morph or to keep up with any changes of the drug?
That would be a question for your attorney.
Yeah, when it was prepared, you know, there was, there was some information that we were reviewing with the American Association of Poison Control Centers, and, you know, we believe that based upon that information that we received there, and also the information that was provided to us by, I forget. Okay.
Lieutenant Zito.
Yeah, the lieutenant, that led us to believe that this language that we created would be sufficient to address those changing.
That's fantastic.
Contaminants, I guess, is what we're looking for, so.
Okay.
And by the way, just one other thing, I want to let you know that I went for, and I went and updated the American Association of Poison Control Centers from the last ordinance that was adopted in two thousand and thirteen, and I think it was Gainesville. There were two hundred, or two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight cases reported. In two thousand and thirteen, it went up to thirty-six hundred. Two thousand and fourteen, it went to seventy-eight hundred, and two thousand and fifteen, and, I'm sorry, two thousand and fifteen, it was seventy-eight hundred, and in the first two months of this year alone, it was five hundred and sixty-seven cases, so it's just skyrocketing. You know, the poison control centers is watching that, so this is very, very beneficial to catch people that are doing this.
And Commissioner, we can put you in contact with Lieutenant Zito if you have, he's much more the expert with the synthetic drugs, and he might be able to better answer that question if I didn't touch it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much, Deputy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other commissioners? Is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
I didn't have a motion.
I thought I had a motion out there. I'll entertain a motion for resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero-five.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, sorry.
An ordinance.
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City manager, comments from city staff?
Recommendations for approval, Mr. Mayor?
Is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lester?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Next resolution, two thousand sixteen dash sixteen. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash sixteen, a resolution, City of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget by decreasing general fund capital outlay expenditures in the amount of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, increasing Archibald Fund capital outlay expenditures in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars, increasing sanitation fund capital outlay expenditures in the amount of forty-four thousand dollars, transferring a fixed asset from the general fund to the stormwater fund, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of resolution two thousand sixteen dash sixteen by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution twenty sixteen dash sixteen be approved.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. City Manager, any comments from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have Mr. Tannalia walk you through it, because it's convoluted as presented, and I think he needs to just kind of walk you through it step by step. Item B requires a waiver of bid requirements, and I think since I've been here in four and a half years, we've maybe done this two or three times, and the reason for this is, this is that bucket truck, and we're gonna take the bucket off of one, we're gonna flip-flop some material around anyway, so, long story short, is it would be literally impossible to bid this out. This is a specialty piece of equipment. It's a specialty install, and so we need to go with the people that have worked on it before. So that's why, item B, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if it can be all in the same motion, but the authorization of expenditures, the thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for vehicle equipment conversion, needs to include a motion that you approve of the waiver of bid requirements for just that one single item. Everything else is off of the state bid or the sheriff's bid.
That's what I would recommend, Mayor.
So, Mr. Tannalia, the floor is yours.
Okay, I will address the budget amendment resolution, and I'll try to address the specific authorizations in place of the public works director. The budget amendment is a revision to the adopted vehicle replacement plan for fiscal year two thousand sixteen. The net effect of the changes that were read by the city attorney is to reduce expenditures by a total amount of fifty-six thousand dollars. That's the net amount between all funds. I have to mention a couple little caveats. As I've encouraged you to kind of look fund by fund instead of on the gross basis, there are just a couple things to be aware of. That savings of fifty-six thousand dollars would only be realized if one of the vehicles that has been deferred is in fact removed from the vehicle replacement plan down the line. So just keep in mind with these vehicles, it's great that we're reducing costs in the current fiscal year, but ultimately, the vehicles will need to be replaced at some point, so it's more like deferring costs instead of reducing expenditures. But that budget amendment essentially just revises the vehicle replacement plan to better address some of the public works operational needs, and so based on that, staff would recommend approval. And just in order of the agenda, I think that the current motion is specific to the budget amendment, and then we would separately approve the authorizations, so I will leave it at that for now.
Is there any comments from the commission? Is there any further comments? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
All right, next, authorization of expenditures, authorization of expenditures in the amount of twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and four cents for vehicle acquisition in accordance with State of Florida Agriculture and Lawn Equipment Contract Number Two One One Zero 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 One Five One. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I still move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, Mr. City Manager, do you want to go ahead and?
Our recommendation is for approval, our only caveat is on the next one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
And Mayor, I failed to recognize, Mr. Marsh kind of wanted to be here, he had a small family emergency, so I excused him from the meeting, that's why Vince is playing double duty, otherwise Dave would be here.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Next, authorization of expenditures, authorization of expenditures in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for vehicle equipment conversion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we waive the bid requirement for this thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for vehicle equipment conversion.
And approve the expenditure?
And approve the expenditure.
Thank you.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion in the second, Mr. City Manager, any comments from staff?
You guys nailed it, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there any further comment? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
All right, next, authorization of expenditures, authorization of expenditures in the amount of sixty-nine thousand nine dollars and nine cents for vehicle replacement in accordance with Florida Sheriff's Association Bid Number Fifteen Dash Twenty-three Dash Zero Nine Zero Four.
I still move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
I have a motion in the second, is there any comments from staff?
Staff recommendation for approval?
Is there any further comments? The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
All right, next, resolution two thousand sixteen dash seventeen, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, resolution two thousand sixteen dash seventeen, a resolution of the City of Madeira Beach, Madeira Beach, Florida, amending the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget by increasing general fund expenditures in the amount of sixty-three thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars, increasing building fund expenditures in the amount of sixty thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars, and providing for an effective date. That was reading resolution two thousand sixteen dash seventeen by title only.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to pass resolution two zero one six one seven.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
Staff recommendation is for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further comments, Mr. Miller?
Again, not to be a pest, but what is this being spent on?
Mr. City Attorney? Or Mr. City Manager?
Actually, I'd have to defer to Vince, there's three separate expenditures.
This is to provide funding for professional services relating to land development, planning, zoning, and building management.
This is Mr. Healy?
This is Mr. Healy and Mr. Carrier's firms, both, yes.
So, this is the city is spending this money to, well, I'd have to, in my opinion, it's to aid the developer in passing his development, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Mr. Mayor, if I can comment on that?
Yes.
There's backup in your packet, I think it's the last section of section I, if I'm not mistaken, C, am I correct? And I was reading it, just for a little bit of background, you know, Dave Healy, Al Carrier, both their firms have been under contract with the city since I got here back in two thousand and twelve, and for lack of a better term, when we had a building, or I'm sorry, a zoning and planning director, they were used when the workload was too great for one person, or frankly, and I don't mean to be demeaning to anybody that held a position, but if the amount of work or the level of expertise was over our head. I think back in December, I came to you when we separated employment with our zoning and planning director, and said, a couple of things, A, it's going to be darn to, or darn hard, difficult to recruit at the moment because of all this development, and I know what a baptism like fire, by fire is like, and this would be worse, I think, and so it's proven to be difficult to recruit. In fact, Vince and I have been doing that probably for the last two to three weeks, and I've only gotten two or three maybe qualified resumes. The issue isn't that we're, they're on contract to just aid the developers, in fact, a lot of those costs are reimbursable to the city. This is just to do the everyday planning and zoning stuff, in quotes, CRS work, you know, I'm not, I don't have their, the verbiage that they use, but I mean, we have stuff coming in and out of here all day long, every single day. If you see Gwen and Patty ever have five seconds to themselves during the day, you would know that we have a lot of things that needed to, need to be taken a look at by the zoning department, we've got a lot of pending things, we can't even keep up right now. I am going to fill the position, I'm trying, I can't get anybody to apply, I mean, this is a very, very difficult time in Madeira Beach to apply for the planning and zoning position.
And, Mr. City Manager, all that comes from the building department, correct?
That I can't confirm.
Well, it was a question I didn't hear.
The funds coming from the building department, from things, money brought into the building department, that the building department's created a reserve, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I heard the number of a half a million dollars. Somewhere in that.
Approval of this item will, will use the existing building fund reserve, yes.
Right, and Mr. Miller's kind of saying that this is coming from taxpayers' money, and it's not, it's been created from the building fund, which is permits and.
That is true, along with the idea that this is the plan that we developed as a team and voted on unanimously in December, this includes, you know, and Cheryl's raise, and I'm not going to beat around the bush, that's why I brought you guys the raise.
Well, Mr. City Manager, all I'm saying is trying to answer Mr. Miller's question, actually, yes, the developers are paying for it, sir, if you got that part.
That is.
Oh, yeah, no, no, sir, I just wanted to make sure you were clear.
No, 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 we're just trying for ultimate transparency.
Crystal, yes, sir, I just wanted to make sure it was crystal clear.
So, anyway, my only comment to that is that I am actively recruiting to fill the position, but until these developments wither away, or get approved, or get disapproved, or whatever, we're going to, we're constantly working on those things, along with everything else that we have to deal with, you know, people, I can announce this now, Steve Westfall is coming in with the plans this week to build that restaurant that half the people in this audience tonight want to have at one hundred and fortieth and Gulf Boulevard, that's just one really bad example, because there's a hundred more that I could give you. So the department is completely overworked, and I'm in a position where I can't find somebody to take the job, so until then, this is the hand we've been dealt, and I apologize, but it is what it is.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. The city clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schatz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
All right, reports and correspondence, is any Commissioners having reports or correspondence since the last meeting? All right, the only thing I would like to report is, something I left out besides being re-elected, the President, the MS Advisory Board, I'm the incoming Vice President for the Barrier Island Government Council, so continuing to give Madeira Beach to poison Pinellas County. Mr. City Attorney, anything?